Recording in progress.
Okay, we have started.
Thank you very much, Maria. Okay, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Brandon School Board on November 15th at 6:30. May I have a roll call?
Melissa Clark present. Rebecca Haynes here.
Diane Salter.
Here.
Kimberly Smith Colaga up here. Hillary Stokowski here. Jeff Soke is absent with notice. Dr. Hydrick.
Here.
Jan Meek.
Here.
Karen Stone.
Here.
Diane Zedan.
Here.
Lisa Calhoun.
Here.
Thank you. May we stand for the flag of the United States of America? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We have a spot for public comments and questions solely on agenda business. Thank you. Those will be at the end, right, at the other opportunity that we have for comments. Thank you for showing me.
You're welcome.
All right, Diane.
Do you want me to?
Yes, please, thank you.
I do not have any hands raised.
Thank you, Maria.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Yes, again, we want to thank everyone for being part of the Information Online Campaign and its success. And I definitely appreciate our staff, parents, and our community for supporting our bond proposal. Our next steps in December will be to look at the District-wide Facilities Committee and engage in long-range planning. And a large part of that planning process will be for the completion of projects in the summer of 2023. So there's a lot of time in there. However, it might be possible to finish or to get started on a few outdoor projects this summer so that we can look at it. Our role is to bring educational stakeholders to the table and be part of process in the planning. So that we're clear with our staff, parents, and community about projects moving forward in the completion phase. Further, we're going to work on a multi-year technology plan. And our administrative team is going to draft that out here in December. And we're going to share it with the board and community soon. And again, thankful for the opportunity we've afforded the bond process.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Dr. Hydrick? All right, thanks, everyone. I'm going to, oh, as debating. Next item is approval of the consent agenda. But as we segue into action items for on tonight's agenda, we do need to add one item that will be become item E. And it relates to the regularly scheduled meeting for December, which, given a number of reasons, we are proposing that we move it from December 20th to December 13th. And also, I want to highlight that it would not be at 6:30, it would be at 6:00 instead. So I'm highlighting both of those for anybody listening, anybody in the audience. I know we have a ton of, some who are very attentive to our schedules. So please note, the action item is to move the December meeting from December 20th to the 13th and a half an hour earlier. So at 6 o'clock. So that will be action item E up for our vote tonight. The reason we have to vote for it, everybody, is because at the beginning of each calendar year, we decide on, we vote and approve schedules so that everybody knows it upfront. So given the change, we just simply need to acknowledge that as well. All right, now we have our approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Calhoun?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. Our next agenda item is item six for anybody following along. And it is the to discuss information and discussion items. And first up, we have the education report by Carly Stone.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm here this evening to discuss some fall district data points for the school district. We will be sharing NWEA Fall Data at this time. This information is what we shared this time last fall. NWEA is a test that we give annually here in the district. We give it in the fall. We oftentimes give it in the winter, depending on the teacher and the building. And then we always give it in the spring. As a part of our COVID plan, we are required by the state of Michigan to benchmark in the fall because of the pandemic. NWEA happens to be an approved vendor to do that with, an approved assessment. So for us, this is just business as usual. This is what we typically do in the fall. For those that are not familiar with NWEA, I just wanted to give just a very quick overview. The NWEA is a nationally-normed assessment in which achievement and growth of students from all across the country are used to create what are called norms, where students normally are at this point in their academic career. And they use those norms then to compare where a student currently falls, or whether at a grade level, or a building, or a school district. So those norms are generated from the students that take the assessment across the country. And the average is what's considered the norm for the student at that particular moment in their school career. So first grader, sixth grader, eighth grader, et cetera, in the areas of reading and mathematics. I want to be careful when I share this data because the norms that I'm presenting to you today are the norms that were generated before COVID hit. They have, there has not been any changes in the norms from NWEA. NWEA is a national firm. Last fall, over 5.5 million students participated in the assessment. Typically, they have about 11 million students participate because COVID, obviously, we saw a decline in participation. But it is important to know that these norms were generated when everything was normal. So when we, when we, what we thought was normal a couple of years ago, which we will never know to be normal again. But I think that's important to note as we look at this information because we're not necessarily comparing to what things look like today. It's important to note, as I mentioned, there was a significant decline in test participation last year at the local level and also at the state level when it comes to state assessment participation. So that's something really important to keep in mind. So what we have here and presenting to you right now are the percent of students in our school district this fall that presented to be at or above a national norm for the norms that were generated prior to COVID-19. So you can see you've got your grade level there on the far left. The middle column is for reading, represents the norm, the percent of students that are in the norm for reading. And then to the far right, you've got the percent of students that are at or above the norm in mathematics. And here you can see our elementary grades K through 5. So kindergarten for reading, we're at 64%. Mathematics, 71%. First grade, 59%. Mathematics, 55%. Second grade in reading, 47%. 48% in mathematics. Third grade, 57%. And 45% in mathematics. Fourth grade, 62%. 47% in mathematics. And then fifth grade, 54% in reading and 52% in mathematics. And we go ahead and look at our secondary students. You can see here again on the far left, you'll see our grade levels, 6 through 10. This is an assessment that we only give up to 10th grade. In fact, you're only required to do it up to 8th grade, but we go all the way up to 10th grade. And we have done for years, and that is a normal practice in districts across the state and the nation. You can see here the percent for reading at the norm in the middle there, and the percent that are at or above the norm in mathematics, all the way over to the right. And so 6th grade, we have 47% for reading and 40% for mathematics. 7th grade, 51% in reading, 43% in mathematics. 8th grade, 51% in reading, 45% in mathematics. 9th grade, 51% in reading, 54% in mathematics. And then 10th grade, 52% in reading and 64% in mathematics. Again, comparing these two norms that occurred prior to the pandemic. The reason I'm not showing you is side-by-side comparison of last year or the year before is that we truly feel that this year is our baseline year. Last year, we had many students participate in the assessment remotely. And there can be issues when that happens. Sometimes parents are at home and trying to support their students, are unintentionally influencing how the students perform on the assessment. Not everybody participated. We had students quarantining, all that last year in the fall. And so we truly feel that this year is going to be our true baseline year. Yes, we have, the majority of our students back. Those that were brain-in-one from home, or those that currently are brain-in-one from home students, actually came into the district to test this fall rather than testing remotely. We did test a couple of students remotely only, but that was not our normal practice for brain-in-one from home students. So we truly feel like we are now getting our baseline so that from here moving forward, we can then start looking at time, what happens over a period of time. Regardless though, we are not just going to settle on the data and what we see. And so what we've been really focusing on as a district is what are we going to do now that we know the work that needs to be done? And so we, as a school district, saw the most dramatic decline in the areas of reading from the effect of the pandemic. So as a result, we've created a district goal, which is to create, develop, implement, and strengthen our MTSS multi-tiered systems of support for students in grades K-12 in reading and writing to increase their engagement and success in the classroom, as well as achievement on state testing and ELA. So in response to that, we have some action steps. And I know that Diane most recently presented MTSS particularly in the mental health scope. But we've really been focusing on that in the academic and behavioral sense, but really strengthening our academic side of it this year particularly. As you know, MTSS is a practice we've had here in the district. We're working really hard to reset that practice and those processes. You've heard before about the MTSS coordinators that we've put in place in all buildings. Each building has a staff member, or staff members plural, that are sharing the role, that are overseeing the data, looking at our students, looking at failure rates, looking at NWEA data, looking at behavior data, looking at attendance data, to determine who's behind, what are we noticing in that data? Are there any patterns there? And then what might we do as action steps moving forward? We've already had some very intentional professional learning across the district. In fact, November 2nd, our whole focus for the secondary was on multi-tiered systems of support. And understanding tier one is when you're actually working to support all students in the classroom, in the general classroom setting. Tier two, you're providing some targeted support. This may be some additional support provided in the classroom. This may be a double-dip opportunity with an additional staff member. Or a tier three, which is an intensive support, which most people are familiar with, special education being an example of a tier-three intervention. We're spending a lot of time as a staff talking about acceleration versus remediation. One of the fears when we notice that we've seen a big drop in our student performance is that we feel as though we have to go down to fill those gaps. And research is telling us that we need to ensure that we keep our students at grade level and provide them access to grade-level content while working to fill in those gaps as we go. So it is our mission to make sure our students, although some of them are showing areas of weakness and deficit in certain areas, we're ensuring that all students have access to grade-level content where they're supposed to be accessing that information. And then we are working to fill in those gaps along the way as they arise and as they get approached upon in their curriculum. We're being really thoughtful about some data collection, monitoring, and analysis. And I mentioned our MTSS coordinators, but we've also been working with Oakland schools, as I mentioned last time, to generate some reports where we can pull multiple pieces of data to help ensure that we're not missing any students. So MTSS for us is when a teacher is noticing a student maybe falling behind in class, or maybe they have several missing assignments, or maybe they're just not performing well on classroom assessments. And those students would then be discussed with a team. What can we do, you know, as a group of individuals, whether it be counselors, psychologists, administrators, fellow teachers, to help support this particular student or their family? And so oftentimes, we see, you know, the grades and the attendance and such, but sometimes we don't see those things. So we've been building some intentional reports to make sure we don't miss any students and that all students that need support will be identified and we can work and build a plan for them academically. And lots and lots and lots of conversations around multi-tiered systems of support. In fact, Diane and I had a meeting this afternoon with one of our buildings, talking about their recent data meetings they had with their teachers, what patterns are they noticing, what trends are they seeing? So that Diane and I can then start to look at it from a district's perspective to see if there's anything we need to be thoughtful to from a systems perspective to help provide support to the buildings. Some specific literacy interventions that we've put into place for this year, due to a variety of reasons, staffing changes, and also grant funding sources, we have revamped the elementary literacy support model. And so we now have one role. It's the elementary literacy leader who oversees all tier-two intervention across the district at the elementary level. So her name is Annie Molly Gaze-McCarry in August. And she helps align the buildings to ensure that we're all working together and identifying students in an appropriate manner and providing appropriate supports for students in the areas of literacy. She is highly specialized. And she not only provides training to our teaching staff, but also to our paraprofessionals and our teacher assistants and interventions. We have reading specialists in the building now. Last year, we did not have that role. This is a role where we have two highly skilled Brandon teachers that have specialty in reading, that are directly working with our most struggling learners. And so they work, I know one of our buildings, right now, our specialist has a case out of 36 students. And she has a rotation, and she sees them and provides intensive, either guided reading instruction, or phonics work, or additional interventions to help support those students in reading. We then have additional layers there. You can see the teacher assistant role. These folks are in the classrooms, working alongside our students as they're getting access to their new curriculum. And then we also have paraprofessionals. They often help with our students, particularly at the beginning of the year with letter I D and letter S O N, because these folks typically help with recess and lunch duty and those sorts of things. They have other responsibilities in the building. So what's different about this model is that we have our most specialized staff working with our most at-risk students. So we're very excited about this. And they are really working with some intensive support and interventions with our students. At the secondary level, we've brought AARI to the high school, which is the Adolescent Accelerated Reading Initiative. It is supported through Oakland schools. We had a teacher over the summer, Rebecca Rodriguez, who is one of our outstanding newer teachers here in the district. She participated in that training over the summer. And she has hit the ground running this fall with that class. She's already collected her fall data. And she is doing some specific reading intervention for our most struggling readers up at the high school. And then as you are familiar, we have the Alternative Education Program back at the high school as well to help support students in the areas of ELA. So we know we've got a lot of work to do. Our data is telling us that, and we've got work to do in reading, and we've got work to do in math. So what's really important for us is now that we've started to put some structures into place for me to monitor and see how they're working. So our hope is to continue to have the many conversations that we've already been having, building professional development that happens monthly, often speaks to MTSS and what buildings are doing for MTSS. And we look forward to that continuing. We will be monitoring the data that comes in. And not only will we be looking at it, we'll be responding to it, much like Diane and I were doing today when we were having conversations about the themes that we were hearing across the building that we were speaking with. And then what's really neat about the MTSS coordinator position is that we come together quarterly as a whole district team. So we're really unifying the district in terms of what our MTSS processes look like so that all students have the same access and opportunity to be spoken of, to be brought up, so that the families have similar experiences should they be invited to be a part of the conversation to help provide supports to their students. So it's been a busy fall. We're looking forward to the rest of the school year and continuing to monitor that data. We will adjust if we need to, if that data is telling us we need to do that. The time is critical. We have a lot of students that need support. And so we're really trying to be thoughtful and to provide as much support as possible to help our students be able to access grade-level content as quickly as possible.
When will the next threshold data measure be analyzed?
That's great. So at the elementary level, it'd actually be like in January, February time, and that's through our DRA assessments. And so we do those at that time of year. We don't do our full screening again for NWEA till the spring district-wide, although some students, some teachers choose to be there with their class in January. But we don't make that mandatory that happens across the board in the spring. And then we have other checkpoints. So at the secondary level, we look at failure rates right now particularly because we have students, we just finished our first quarter. And so at the end of the first quarter, we look at data points and pull those things in as well. So we're actually regenerating a fresh set of reports now that the quarter just closed last Friday. So it's a variety of different data points, depending on the level of student. But the most immediate is the quarter, then we look again at the semester. And we have a really complete package at the end of the school year. Yes?
I have a question because reading and writing go hand in hand, right? So we spent a lot of time worrying about reading, but we didn't spend a whole lot of time about writing. And you mentioned before the reading and writing, you know, assessment. So my question is, is what are we doing to help support? Or is there a plan to, you're doing reading, there's writing in a modern world where there's technology. So, you know, for instance, and we've had conversations about this in the past where you have 10th graders that are bad at how to write cursive. Now in a modern world, you still have to write cursive, you still have to write your name, and you know that. So I'm interested to hear what steps the district is going to do to help those children that are struggling learning how to write, what they're learning with reading, or their phonics and things like that. Is that anything that the district has planned to do? Or is that like in the next phase of the, of this MTSS, I'd like to be interested in? Just so that our parents know that we're focusing on those different levels.
Absolutely.
You know, if a kindergartner is having trouble reading, they're going to have a trouble with writing as well.
Sure, and you're right, it's definitely a combination. Right now, our immediate focus is reading. All of the plans that I shared with you today were created with a group of people. And so with a set of data in front of us. And so we have not yet developed a comprehensive plan for writing, although I do anticipate that coming along the way. But right now, our immediate focus has been our reading data. And so that's where we started this fall. But we'll be happy to keep you posted as the writing plan develops over time.
Awesome, thank you.
So I love this AARI because you have the adolescent portion in there. So is that something that just misses or missed? Rodriguez is doing, and she's a gen ed teacher also, right?
She is a gen ed teacher.
So, yeah, how does this look?
Yeah, so it's a really small group of students. So this is our first year bringing it to the high school. So we're working with, it's almost, it's not a pilot per se, because we know it's a vetted program. It's utilized all throughout the county. But this is her first year of working with it. And her primary focus is with EL students right now. And then we look to grow that with our more, you know, with additional students over time. Recognizing we do have other avenues in the high school. We have the AIM program, we have directed studies. We have other opportunities for students to receive support in the areas of ELA. The AARI is something we're really looking forward to for bringing. And then hopefully, over time, it will spread throughout the building. We're happy to train more people as we notice that that's a need. But the best part about bringing AARI to the high school is that Miss Rodriguez was super excited about it. She really wanted to be a part of it. So we wanted to start there, start to get some data behind us, see what everything looked like, and then we'll see how it grows over time.
So right now, it's one hour, one teacher, and one scene, okay.
And is that, that's just at the high school, that program?
Right now, it's just at the high school, yeah.
Any other questions? Diane, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate all your information and hard work and your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item under information and discussion is the finance report from Jan.
Hi, good evening. I don't have an official report or presentation. Two items to discuss tonight. First item is our diving board bid as the board had proposed to do an RFP. We did receive one bid. And so tonight, we are recommending that the board approve the contract so that we can get this finalized and get the vendor in here. They're having trouble, like what's going on in the rest of the world, with getting the supply they need. So they, the contract states that they will have this, two diving boards installed by January 14th, and then kind of a comma, as long as they get the, get the equipment. So everything is, the winning bid is Acapulco Pools. They're actually out of Canada, but they do have operations here. And the amount was $38,778.30.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
Is there any value in considering in having the board vote in an amount not to exceed framework like we sometimes do? So it doesn't need to come back, or is this just?
There should not be any extra. This is the contract that we will be entering into. That's the amount, $38,778. There's no, there should not, there's no contingency. That would be surprising if there were.
Okay.
This is the, this is their bid and what they've agreed to do the work for.
Got it.
Is there any harm in doing that, just for formality purposes? Or is it just, there's no surprise hidden thing? I don't, I don't want to have a surprise, so.
I don't see there being harm.
I don't see any surprise. I think this is an in and an out.
Yeah, it sounds like the scope includes everything we need, is what I'm hearing, right?
Absolutely, yes. We have quite a lengthy bid that we put out there, that, very detailed. And then their, their bid, our request was very detailed, and their bid was very detailed as well.
So the request for bid did its job, it outlined everything necessary?
We think so, yes. I mean, you never know. So would it do any harm? No, but we wouldn't expect that they would, that this price would increase.
Okay, thank you.
And then the second item tonight, Mark Evans came to us a few weeks ago. And then again, last week, kind of surprised Carol and I with the tractor. For board members that have been on the board for several years, and this was even before I got here, just 10 years ago, a blade was bought. And I'm talking, I don't know a whole lot about this, but it really pushes snow. And, you know, for our big blizzards and big snows, and it's very efficient. We don't have, we have the blade, it's been in the barn in storage. And we've never had the tractor that we can use the blade with. So it's, yeah. This is something that would be very helpful. Mark has asked if we could, if the board would consider that we purchase this piece of equipment or a tractor. He's telling us the life of this type of vehicle is 50 years. So it's a one-time, a one-time deal. It's going to be around, be in the district for a long time. We don't have anything like that currently. When we do get big snowfalls, we have to hire a contractor to come in and help out the guys. So we would save that money, we would no longer have to do that. And the quotes are somewhere in the $60,000 range. So this is not a cheap piece of tractor. So the question tonight is asking the board if we can proceed with the getting bids for this tractor. We would do a quick timeline. Again, Mark has done some labor work. And two of the, two of the places he has talked to do not have the vehicle, one does. So I guess time is of the essence. But this would be a general fund purchase. We currently have $100,000 in our capital outlay. We haven't spent anything this year. We currently have $100,000 in our capital outlay. We haven't spent anything this year.
Question?
Yes.
How much do we spend annually on the plowing?
Well, our guys do it. So yes, R and R, and I meant to get that number. It would be, it depends on the year. We haven't had a bad snow year. And like last couple of years have been rather mild. But if you bring the guys in, I can get you an exact figure. It depends on the year. If we have three blizzards, we're going to spend more. If it's a mild winter and R and R does not have to come in, it would be much less. We have, we did reduce our maintenance staff by one person a couple of years ago. So that's one less person to help out with snow plowing.
That was going to be one of my questions. Do we have the manpower to efficiently plow even if we get it? Because that, you were saying then we don't make?
Mark says yes. Yeah, Mark said that we would be all set, we wouldn't have to go outside. And again, it has to do with the amount of snow. I want to help me out here, the amount of snow that he can, that they can push at one time. He said it's much more efficient.
On the trucks and the tractor would take over. So if they're not in the truck, then they'd be in the tractor to take, take care of the snow loads.
So how many trucks do we have with plows right now?
Three.
Three.
But they're trucks.
And so we trade one truck per one?
How does a truck do? We, wait, we would trade a truck in?
Well, I'm saying instead of a guy driving a truck, they would drive the plows.
We have four guys that, we have Don who helps out with the maintenance. So we have our three maintenance guys and then Don Heinkel. He helps us to plow in the winter as well. So we have four guys that are available to do that.
Is there another purpose that the tractor can be used for?
I guess it's a year round. It's like a farm truck.
Yeah, I mean, from athletics to snow plowing, there's lots of multi-uses, anything that you can handle. But it's currently, it's large enough, this tractor, they'll haul around.
But this tractor probably stay on this campus for the, here in the middle of school? Or is it going to go, how do you get it? Is he just driving it over to Harvey in Oakwood?
Yeah, I mean, this would be housed here, but it would be, yeah, just drive it.
Like drive the tractor itself or trailer?
He would drive tractor, I guess. That was a good question, Lisa, because Mark did talk about the, being able to use it year round for hauling in the summer. So this is not just for snow plow.
We need more information on how it fits into the bigger picture of things, especially when we're talking about updating our facilities and things to do with fields.
Yeah, are you asking us to? It's just that, you guys, let's clarify. I agree. I agree with everything, but let's clarify. Tonight's action that Jen is asking for us to consider is just to go out for the RFP. That's it.
Not voting for a contract or anything?
Right. So in the meantime, more discussions to be had, more questions to be asked about. It's, you know, it's efficiency, it's necessity, so forth and so on.
And I did ask, I'm sorry, I did ask Mark Evans to be here tonight. It's hunting. He's like a hunter. So just bad timing because he could really explain a lot of this better than I am. So he can come for the next meeting, yeah.
Sure. So what's the value of this blade right now?
Zero. I mean, it's been collecting dust for 10 years.
Well, that's not necessarily true.
Like a price for a Western plow? I don't know what size blade is, but I can recall a Western plow, five, $10,000?
We paid 13.
13, okay.
Well, I asked, we paid 13,000, yeah.
Okay.
And there's a whole story there, I guess.
Yep, I'm sure. I'm sure there is.
So again, Mark feels that this would be, you know, he's, he's telling us this would be really helpful for his team.
I'm okay with getting a bid, but I definitely want some more information.
Very good. We'll do that and then come back for the next meeting and talk about it. And we'll invite Mark.
Sounds good. Does anybody have any other questions on the plowing potential tractor?
Is that an action item? Because I don't see it.
No, it's, yeah, it is.
It is, yes.
We were going to discuss them.
So I don't see it as an one.
We have to add an RFP. Add an action item to go out for an RFP?
That'd be great.
All right.
All right, you go.
Perfect. So just so I can write down for my secondary purposes, presented the action item for the tractor. You're going to write it out?
Yeah, I'm writing it out and I'll give it to you.
It's going to be item F.
Yep.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Write down my notes. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. All right. Thank you very much, Jen, for the information. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention. All right, now we are going to move on to our action items for the evening. It's item seven and we'll, of course, begin with A for those following along. Our first item is the approval of a bond, a bond authorizing resolution series one. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the bond resolution series I, one, as presented.
Support. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Caluna?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. Motion passes. Our next action item before we, well, we'll do it during discussion. It is the approval of Oakwood Elementary overnight trip to Mackinac City. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Oakwood Elementary fifth grade students overnight trip to Mackinac City, May 17, 18, 2022, as presented.
Support. It is Mackinac Island, right?
Mackinac City, I think.
It says city I T R, but it's not, it says.
In the other, it's Mackinac Island.
So which one is it? Yeah, Mackinac, Mackinac.
Would you like me to redo that?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the Oakwood Elementary fifth grade students overnight trip to Mackinac Island, May 17 through 18, 2022, as presented.
Support. All right, and during our discussion, I believe that that we have, is she there? Oh, yeah, Coy Stewart. Coy Stewart is with us in order to discuss more about this trip. Hey, Coy.
Hello.
Thanks for joining us to discuss this opportunity.
Sure, it's no problem. So this is going to be our attempt at the fourth year for this, what we wished to be an annual trip. We did get to go in 2019 and then in 2020 and 21, we had to, for obvious reasons, not go through with our trip. But this year, it looks like we're back on target. It is both to Mackinac City and to Mackinac Island, but the bulk of the time is on the island.
Okay. And there's fundraising, I'm assuming, going on for this, for this trip?
It's a cost incurred by the families for the most part, but yes, we do some fundraising as well.
Okay. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Coy?
No.
All right. Thank you, Coy. Appreciate your information. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Caluna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do I need to redo that for all in Dan City or are we okay with adding that?
I believe it can stand.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that. Action item C is the approval of contracts for Brandon Administrators Association, Brandon Educational Support Personnel Association, Maintenance Central Office, and main, excuse me, and Maintenance Central Office. I'll get there. May I have a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the contracts for BAA, BESPA, Maintenance and Central Office as presented.
Support. Any discussion?
That's everybody, correct?
That's everybody from this year.
All right. Good work. All right. So hearing no discussion, may I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes, yes. Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Caluna?
Yes. Thank you. Our next item is the approval of the diving board bid recommendation.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the diving board bid from Gall Construction of America LTV as presented.
Support. Any discussion?
Just want to make sure that we're, I just want to reiterate that this is a dire necessity for the district because of safety purposes. So those that weren't at the meeting last morning can just kind of understand that this isn't, this is a dire.
Yes, it's been considered, yeah. Thank you. And that, if I can layer on that, that one board at least is not even operational. It's currently taken out of commission for safety.
Both, both boards.
Both boards are not. Okay, well, there we go. Perfect. So thank you, Melissa, for that, for explaining that further. All right. Any further discussion on this action item? Okay, hearing none, may I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Caluna?
Yes. Motion passes. Now, for everybody's purposes who are, who are following along, we are adding action items E and F. And the first of those, item E, will be an action regarding the approval of moving the December 2021 regular board meeting from the 20th to the 13th of December. May I have a motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the December 2021 regular board meeting date change from Monday, December 20th, 2021, 6:30 PM to Monday, December 13th, 2021, to 6:00 PM.
Exactly.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Caluna?
Yes. Thank you. Our next item F is an action item regarding the district pursuing getting RFPs for a tractor. May I have a motion?
Okay, and I'm going to read it briefly a second. And let Jen and Carol agree that this is okay for the wording. Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the district to get RFP bids for a tractor.
Yes. Support. Anybody? Support. Any discussion, further discussion on that? And if we have the understanding, it's at the very initial stages, lots of questions to be asked, making sure we're, where we need to be on that. So, all right, no further discussion. May I have a roll call vote?
Melissa Clark, no. Rebecca Haynes?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
No.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Lisa Caluna?
Yes.
All right. We have no more action items, correct? Everybody agrees we've inserted what we needed to to cover tonight's business?
Can I circle back on a little while? I'm just wondering. I'm generally interested. I know we just approved Oakwood's trip. Like, is there any insight that causes spots on, are we doing something in a way that's great? Is there something like that that maybe we can get nothing on here from the, from the?
Yeah, I can, I can ask.
I'm just interested, just so that we're equalizing.
Planning purposes, I could get some updates.
And I'm sorry, I missed, I didn't.
It said Oakwood, we just approved Oakwood's trip to Mackinac City. And I'm just interested from the board perspective, if there's any planning that's going to be done for Harvey Swanson fifth graders in January?
Can we talk about that? The teachers did send out a survey about two to three weeks ago, the fifth grade teachers asking for ideas for the fifth grade farewell.
Cool.
A guy applies for, so I told you. So, yeah, so I don't, we haven't received a follow-up from that. But asking for ideas, this, I think, have done CJ Barrymore's in the past, so.
Is this a fifth grade farewell?
Yes.
Oh.
Well, no, I don't.
Well, Oakwood's, right, because Oakwood's being like educational, so I'm just wondering if we're, if we're mirroring the education.
So that was one of the questions in the survey too, was parents, how do you feel about it being educational and fun? Just for fun, just for educational purposes, so.
But that's separate. That's a different survey than.
Cool.
No, I just wanted, I just wanted to.
I don't know. Are they considering this?
Yeah, I can ask.
Is Oakwood considering it a fair, a fifth grade farewell? I, that's not what I.
I think the conversations are being held.
Yeah.
Yeah, along with conversations about what might be occurring, best, best that can be done for purposes of holiday activities and spring activities with, given the timing. So I believe there are conversations taking place and everybody's trying to put their best foot forward, so.
But yeah, as I, I wasn't talking about the farewell. I was more talking along the lines of the fifth grade educational experience at Oakwood is happening. If there's any reporting, you can, you can let them know. I'm just.
Yeah, I can, I can give you the trips of planning.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we have item eight on our agenda. And just as a reminder, I recognize several cases, so we know how this goes. But for anybody listening, I want to ensure that we all understand the approach to our public comments. They're all appreciated. We are so happy to have you here and to hear from everyone. We know that we have to have certain rules governing public comments, including the amount of time each speaker has, which is three minutes. Thank you very much. And we always like to, of course, keep in mind the statements that we're making and whether or not they're at all something that should be addressed personally or to one building in particular. Always be kind, be respectful, anything that's said, anybody who's out there that I can't see, anything that's said that could be deemed to be slanderous or other, otherwise legally actionable is up to you. If you're thinking about something like that, go ahead and consult with someone before that goes down. So I do send a timer. It helps everyone. And so please don't be offended by that. So I'm going to ask, do we have anybody? I'm going to look to the, we have there first because we always do it the other way. I've got to switch it up tonight.
Okay. Would you not have any DMs raised?
Okay, thank you. So on our list, we have two speakers who have signed up. The first is Jen.
Okay, so first off, I'm just going to start, hello. I cannot imagine at the times we're living, we sit in the seats that y'all are sitting in, so thank you for that. I can go into the fact that we've looked up $3,018,272 that came from a COVID relief aid and what, what, what is that being used for? I heard you speak about the children's like mental wellbeing and that's what I'm here for. I'm here to speak to your conscience at the end of it. I sat at gymnastics last week and listened to a 12-year-old little girl say to her dad, "Dad, so we have new COVID rules. First, I get a warning, sixth grade." And I don't know about you ladies, but woo, those sixth grade girls. I had enough problems in sixth grade with girls being mean to me that the psychological damage. She said, "Dad, first I get a warning, second I get a lunch detention." So then she's detained. And then third, I get, I get suspended or, or cast out or... I know a lot of you don't have the authority. I know there are uppers. I know there, and all of this. But again, I'm here to simply speak to the fact that I don't believe in God. I know who I'm going to answer to, but each and every one of you, one day, will answer to somebody. And if you can sign an oath that says you're looking out for our children and yet watch them psychologically be damaged by, why are there 50,000 people at a concert? Why are there football games going on, but these people aren't masked, but are most vulnerable? Our babies, our children, the people that I feel so, so strongly within my soul to stand up for are being masked. And again, I don't know any of you personally. I don't know what you believe in. I don't know anything. I'm not even here to, I, I can't imagine. I'm not sitting in your shoes. But this is all, and everybody's got their own political beliefs, everything else. In my opinion, it's become such a game in our pawns or these children. And so I'm asking as a mother, as a human, that again, when you lay your head down, that you really think about what you're doing. And if right now is the time, that it's time to say where you're sitting, okay, I'm going to stand up because these kids. The psychological damage of them having to just, they can't breathe. And yet they're going to be cast out. I hear the bullying of, well, you're a grandma killer. And I mean, do these kids really need to go, well, we're all adults trying to figure out our beliefs and our politics and jam, no jam, all the different. Again, nothing new to y'all, but again, I would just ask that as people that do stand here, sit here and say that you're here for our kids, that you really soul-search if you need to, to determine where you want to stand. Because I want to be on the part of history that says I stood up to my children being used as, as I look at the numbers of COVID-19 and it's like quarantine, like I feel like they're rats in an experiment and it is truly, truly heartbreaking. So again, I appreciate y'all. So again, I appreciate y'all, I, I'm not here to point fingers and say y'all are monsters. You're not, you're sitting in a position that's hard. So I appreciate that, and I hope that you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sorry, I just need to write one more thing down. Thank you. And next, our last speaker is Megan.
Hello. All right, this is totally out of my comfort zone. I hate public speaking, but I really feel compelled to be up here. And I'm actually piggybacking off of what Jen talked about with the mental health. I want to say that, and I'm just gonna read, I wrote this down, and I'm good, and I'm proud to. I'm, I'm for parent choice. I understand, it appears that districts in Oakland County have their hands tied. I also think it's time to explore ways to move forward from this mandate. It seems that counties that have had this in place are beginning to announce some end dates for when masks in schools will be lifted, just in county today. Oakland County still seems to be silent. So I'm just wondering, are we going to be one of the only counties continuing to do this? All along, I have fully believed in parent choice when it comes to these decisions, but now even more so because it has become very personal. My third grader has been directly affected by this mandate going off that mental health, and therefore he is now being homeschooled after a negative experience in his classroom this year. It turned into anxiety about going to school instead of focusing on what he was supposed to be learning in class. His attention was focused on mask, quarantine, COVID, and it turned into a dislike for school in general. Last year, we did learn from home, so the in-person experience with the COVID restrictions was new to him. Thankfully, he was able to express his feelings, and we can do what, what he needed. But I'm just wondering about all of the children that aren't able to express that, and they're internalizing all of this. At one of the last board meetings, we heard that there's an increase in the need for mental health resources. So I'm thinking there may be a connection here to what's been going on for the last twenty months in schools. I'd also like to point out that in the board meeting in August, before the Health Department mandate was issued, and choice was still on the table, we talked about, or you, you talked about the importance of the messaging related to the masks and it being a family or personal choice. There was concern about bullying, social situations. And I think, I think this should extend, extend not only to the students, but to the staff as well. I'd like to see some, maybe some proactive measures being taken in regards to this as we see other counties lifting the mandate, realizing that may also happen here. It may be beneficial to encourage staff to be cognizant of their perceptions and feelings related to masks to promote just a neutral mindset over this issue. Every adult is coming to school with a different opinion. Of course, rightfully so, everyone deserves their opinion on that. But when it comes down to the kids, I think those opinions need to be kept neutral. My ultimate concern may be the masks, but I'm just really concerned about overall choice in the schools. Prior to COVID, I think it was safe to say there was an understanding that every child has different needs, and the school should work to accommodate the best they could. Fast forward to now, and all of a sudden, this broad advice related to health is, is supposed to work for every child. And if it doesn't, then that's just too bad. Overall, everyone just needs to do what's best for their personal situation, and I fully support the choice in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Very much appreciated. All right, with that, we are on to item number nine in our, which is our closed session for our superintendent evaluation. So we'll be moving to closed session now.